Oh, good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Charles Bromley with the Shaker Square Alliance. And today we're hosting a forum to award for candidates in the Cleveland City Council. And it's important race because Ken Johnson, who held the seat for forty years, has obviously vacated it for new location. And so today we will have this and really happy to have a couple of folks who are helping us out with this. Chanel, if you could just wave or do something, say hello, there she is. Chanel is the city councilman in South Euclid. And has served there for a year and a half or so. And in her real life, she is a social worker at the VA Hospital. And an active member of the League of Women Voters. So Chanel will be our moderator. So she's the kind of the chief referee on the court here. And the other person that is active in with this with Legal Women versus Meg Weingard, who will be our official timer, and she's got her cards out there to let us know, you know, when, when things are going to start and stop. It's important issues, we got to get out and talk about them. And we have a number of questions that have been submitted. And the candidates will have an opportunity to respond to it. And you, the voters who are on the Zoom call, have an opportunity to put questions in the chat and also get a response to that. So it is really important. And I'll turn it over to Mary Ann Kovach, who is our other sponsor with Chad.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mary Ann Kovach from Shaker Square Area Development Corporation. And I would just like to welcome the candidates. The top primary voter getters, of course, were Deborah Gray. Welcome, Deborah, and Eric Walker. Thank you, Eric, for being here. And we also have Antoine Tolbert, who is a write-in candidate. We did invite both write-in candidates, but I don't believe Dantes Taylor is joining us today. So thank you all for being here. And as we begin, you'll be able to introduce yourselves and tell us a little more about each of you. So on to Chanel.
All right. So I want to thank everyone for joining us today for the Ward Four Council Candidate Forum. As was mentioned, my name is Chanel Elston. I'm a member of the Greater Cleveland Legal Women Voters. I'm also a councilperson here in South Euclid, and I'm going to be assisting as the moderator for today's forum. Today's candidates for city council will be asked a series of questions, which will help you, the residents, to understand what the candidates would do if they were elected. Some of the questions have been submitted in advance. And if you would like, you have the opportunity to also add questions via the chat box, which will go over towards the end of time permits. Um, I want to just give a couple reminders that this is a forum and not a debate. We're going to ask that all of the audience members and candidates get their mics muted unless they are actually answering a question. And each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. The time keeper, who is Meg Weingard, she will provide time, she will notify you when you are at fifteen seconds, a stop card, and then for the you are, we will be able to finish your sentence. So if you're in mid-sentence and you see the stop card, you can complete your sentence. For the opening and closing statements, you'll get two minutes. And you'll have, it'll be the same card. You'll have, no, you have a thirty-second timer, a thirty-second card, a fifteen-second card, and then a stop card. Um, so we're going to go ahead. Oh, lastly, there are questions that will be asked to all of the candidates. And then there have been some questions submitted that will be asked specifically to certain candidates. So we're just gonna, just letting you guys know that ahead of time. That way you don't, you don't think there's any unfairness. So we're going to go ahead and move into opening statements. All the order for the questions will kind of just be randomized. For the opening statements, we'll start with Mrs. Gray. You have two minutes.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for having this forum for the candidates in Ward Four. Appreciate it. My name is Deborah Gray. I'm running for the city council position in Ward Four. I have lived in Ward Four for the last twenty-five years. I have raised my children here, and I'm a homeowner. I also have a degree, a business degree from Tri-C. I am a former ambassador for Burton Bear Car. I'm a former RAC board member from St. Louis Foundation, and that's a, and that's a Rack Advancement Committee member. Resident Advancement Committee member. Civil participation is vital to our democracy, especially in Ward Four as of now. I believe we need to work together in order to improve our community. What I have done with my residents at their request of listening to their issues, issues and concerns, we have had a building that was abandoned for thirty years. We had a building tore down in our community through the process of working with housing building. We have had streetlights put up due to the infrastructure that they had on one hundred, on one hundred sixteenth. And we had to have those streetlights put back up due to numerous accidents. I also assist the homeowners of helping them repair and fix their homes with a grant that Burton Bear Car submitted to me to have the homeowners to have their homes repaired. As well as getting out and understanding what other issues and concerns that the residents have in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you.
Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. Peace, peace, family. Thank you to everyone that helped organize this event, put this together. Thank you for your time, hard work and dedication. I think that the residents of Ward Four, the voters of Ward Four deserve the opportunity to know the candidates that are in this race. So normally, traditionally, I would start off with seeking permission from the elders to speak. But being that we're on Zoom, I can't do that. So my name's Antoine Tolbert. I'm a father. I'm a son. I am a national organizer. I am the president of New York Cleveland. I've organized in cities from Cleveland to Long Beach or bringing vital resources to our people. I'm a program developer. We develop programs right in the Cleveland community. Safe zones, self-defense classes, financial literacy, political education classes. So I understand that the scope of our solutions has to be wide-based. And I also feel that it's time for new, fresh, innovative leadership in Ward Four, especially being that we're leaving from a current regime. So as we move forward to this new administration, I think that we need to have someone that can bring fresh ideas to the table, someone that can think outside the box, someone that is also going to be boots on the ground, that has a proven record of, of, of leadership and has shown that they've been committed to the community long before this opportunity has arisen. And also, this is an opportunity for people to get to know who I am as a person. Please do your research. I'm not going to accidentally vote for me. But what I will ask is for you to do your research, be informed, make an informed decision on November second. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Buddy, um, thank you to Shaker Square Alliance and Shaker Area Development for putting this, this most important forum together. I want to start by saying that when I was twelve years old, my mother and my older sister in looking for a house, we decided to move on one hundred fortieth and Kinsman. And I've been living in this, in this house. I moved, well, I moved back to the house that I grew up in, where my mother died in two thousand seventeen. She was a very, very business-oriented woman who made sure that we at our family reached out and, and, and cared for other people. That was her ministry. She was a missionary and she fed and she clothed and she housed people. And she instilled that, that same value in me. And so in moving and, and doing the work here in, in Ward Four, I have been boots on the ground. I have attended, way before I decided to run for city council, I had attended city council meetings every Monday to just see what was going on about decisions that were happening in the city council that affect me and my neighbors. I am, I worked for Cleveland Public Library. I've worked for them for twenty-seven years. And I've been doing the work in, in advocating and mentoring people for twenty-seven years. And I have been active in this war. Just last year, after the murder of George Floyd, I, I, there was something that just had to be done, I, I thought. So I went down to, to, to Washington DC and came back and decided that we had to, to do something. And from there, we put on
Thank you, Mr. Walker. All right, we're going to move into the question and answer part, portion of the form. So you'll have one minute to answer the question. We're going to start with Mr. Tolbert. What legislation would you propose to improve housing within the ward?
To improve housing? I think that the, the main concern that has been plaguing our community all over the city of Cleveland is lead. So I would like to support the, the efforts of organizations like Clash, organizations like Clevelanders for Lead Safety, Lead Safe Housing. People that are already doing the work, people that have already done the research, people that have already drafted up legislation that just needs support. I know that there was some legislation passed in twenty nineteen, but it's not strong enough to enforce. It's not strong enough to enforce that we need, we have to prioritize safe housing. We have, I, I want to say that Cleveland.com said that ten thousand children in the last five years have been affected by lead. And I mean, this detrimental to our community, it's been attached to the, the lack of being able to perform in school. And also it's directly attached to violence. I think that if we look back at, if we take a step back and look at the senseless violence that's been going on in our city, it's, it's directly connected to, to lead in our communities.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes.
What legislation would you propose to improves, improve housing within the ward?
What?
You want me to repeat it?
Uh, no.
Oh.
No. I worked with dozens of homeowners to cut through the red tape to get housing fixed. I go to City Hall to cut the red tape to raise, to raise limits for the AMI for Sharp. Pretend to the threshold of the, the threshold amount of how much, how much income a person can have to apply for these applications. You know, I'll give you an example. I'll give you an example as the heart application, Home Assistant Repair Program. They have a threshold of like twenty-five thousand something for a homeowner to apply to get their homes repaired. I would raise that threshold so, so all homeowners be able to get their homes repaired and fixed up. So that's the legislation that I will
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
You know, one of the things that we need to do, right now, the county allows the sale of the tax liens against homeowners who are delinquent in taxes. And the NAACP some time ago put out a statement and wrote a letter to Mr. Fitz, this, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I think was his name, was the county executive at the time, or Fitzgerald at the time, to put a moratorium on the tax lien sales. The tax lien sales are, are when delinquent taxes are done. People from other cities can come in and, and buy those tax, purchase those liens. And then they have ownership to the house, which they care nothing about. And we've seen from those tax lien sales that the houses have, have been neglected, that they are in bad shape. And so I, I think it's incumbent on whoever gets in city council to talk with the county to say, we need to stop and put a moratorium on taxing sales.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Walker. The question is, what recreational opportunities do you feel would best benefit the community?
Um, so recreational opportunities. I think right now, we, we need to look at our rec centers and, and decide, you know, how they could best be used. I, I was talking with the director of, 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 of the rec center some time ago and trying to get Hamilton Rec Center some work done on there, which we, we completed. It's an inside indoor swimming pool area. And he said to me that, you know, they were looking at building a, an entire rec center right where Hamilton High School, Junior High used to be. So I think right then, getting with him and seeing where their project is, just so that we can get, you know, a rec center built there.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So I'm at Zumba George every Monday from four to six. That rec center needs a different, there, some various different program in there. We really need more community members to be consistent and showing up to these spaces. Also, as far as recreation, safe houses. I'm, I'm working with people right now. We're developing a art safe house on one hundred fifteenth and Forest. This is going to be a community space because a lot of people, depending on where you are from in the neighborhood, the rec may not be a safe space for you to go, depending on what neighborhood you're growing up in. So having a safe space that's within walking distance of your home, right in the heart of the community, where you can go, you can not only focus on sports, but arts. You know, if you need personal hygiene products, you know, this is the place where you can come and just get the bare necessity, snack. Just a, a space to get out the house and, and go somewhere and not have to deal with the things that we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. So safe houses, there's one on Kinsman. Brendan, one of my good friends is operating. And then there's one, like I just said, that we're currently
Thank you, Mr. Tolbert.
For us. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Ms. Gray?
Yes. Then I, I just want to make a comment on the, one thing about the tax liens that Mr. Walker stated on. I just want to say tax liens are county, not city council. There hasn't been a tax lien sales in years.
That's not, that's absolutely not true.
One moment, please. So we're only going to allow the candidate that's answering the question to speak.
Sorry.
All right. Ms. Gray?
That's my opinion. That's my opinion. So, you know, this is not a debate. That's my opinion, Mr. Walker. So, but anyway, dealing with the rec centers. Four years ago, four years ago, our mayor, Jackson, changed the rec centers to the resource centers through his, through his sustainability program that he created four years ago. So all the rec centers are able to open up different programs through the, you know, with the residents in the community. As myself, the rec centers, as myself, I created a cooking class at Zumba George three and a half years ago prior to
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Okay.
All right. Our next question, we're going to start with Mr. Walker. The question is, how can you improve policing services to residents in Ward Four, considering that the district, the fourth district is so large?
So let me just make a comment about the tax lien sales. When I, when I said is, is that we will have to work with Chi-Hoga County to make, put a moratorium on the tax lien sales. I never said that city council was involved or, or managed the tax lien sales. What I said is we have to work with council, with Chi-Hoga Council to do that. And tax lien sales has been an issue for a while now. So my brother is a, my best friend and my brother is a, a, a city, a, a police, a Cleveland police officer. He's a sergeant there. And one of the things that I, I think in talking to him is saying, you know, he has said to me that there, there's got, going to have to be a new way of policing, that the community is, is, is not, not accepting of how Cleveland police used to police. And so we're going to have to develop and work with the commanders and the new mayor and this new administration to figure out how we, we're better police.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Gray, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes.
Okay. How can you improve policing services to residents in Ward Four, considering that the fourth district is so large?
Well, pertaining to that question is, as of July twenty-fourth this year, I had a Q and A event with the fourth district with the commander cuts along with his officer, Officer Burton and his advocate, Mr. Paris. We did a Q and A at the Art and Soul Retunda on East one hundred and eighteenth. And I invited quite a few residents all around Ward Four, came to it. It was a two-hour Q and A along with our councilwoman, appointed councilwoman Anita Gardner, along with Robert Brown of the Coalition-led organization. We asked them questions on how we can work together in the community to talk about drugs, reducing crime, abandoned cars, and anything else that has everything to do with our community. So that's what I have already started to do with the fourth district because we need to get together and communicate that as with residents and with the police department on how to maintain this. Also, I have a
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
This Saturday as well. Thank you.
Mr. Tolbert, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, ma'am. So I think that we're in the year two thousand twenty-one. CPD has been deemed to have a history of excessive force by the Department of Justice, which is why we're currently under the fourth, the fourth, its fourth consent decree. So we need to redesign public safety at this point. New York Cleveland, the organization I'm the president of, we've created safe zones and Ward Four partnering with businesses. So we created safe havens. If someone is feeling distressed, is in a fall, or whatever the case may be, they'll see a decal on the window and they'll know that this place is a place of refuge. There's a, a lockdown protocol. And then we contact the proper authorities. But community policing is, it has to be the approach, the new approach that we take. We do, we go out, we do community patrols, and we focus on community engagement. Not arresting people, not antagonizing people, and not harassing the community, not overpolicing and overcriminalizing our communities, which has been the pattern here in the city of Cleveland. So community policing has to be the initiative. If we want safer streets, it has to be on the residents. If all of them, this is our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Ms. Gray. Will the neighborhood be safer if issue twenty-four passes? And if it passes, what would it change?
Yes, I believe the neighborhood will be safer if issue twenty-four passes because as I said earlier in my previous question, that someone, we as a community need to be at the table in discussion with the police department when they start making these decisions. A couple months ago, the police on the, on the public safety Zoom meeting that they had, they said that they spent four hundred thousand dollars in the community. We don't have any data on that. They received two point five million dollars to, you know, to the police department to help the communities. We have no idea what's going on with the money. So yes, we have to start being at the board table with them to understand, for them to understand, to work with us, for them to know how to engage with us in the community, our needs to create new programs. That's what we need to start in order for them to understand how to keep our community safe.
Thank you.
Transparent is first. Thank you.
Mr. Walker, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, ma'am. So you know, I, I'm in agreement with Mr. Tolbert here. You know, we, we've had how many consent decrees so far? And what, what's come out of them? Nothing, absolutely nothing. And now is the time to get the community involved in, in how they think that we should be policing, sitting at the table and making sure that the things that are important to them are addressed when, when Cleveland Police Department is policing our neighborhoods. It, it's very important. Now, all of a sudden, everybody, the, the administration wants to come out and say, well, this is going to make our neighborhoods less safe. I, I just don't agree. I think that bringing the community and, 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 and leaders to the table to sit in and, and, and dictate how people in this community should be policed is paramount. If we're going to have any change, it's going to have to come from our community.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. So the question was, do I support issue twenty-four and do I think that it will make our streets safe? Correct? Absolutely, I support issue twenty-four. I believe that we need police accountability. We look at, you know, for example, a situation like what's going on in East Cleveland with the murder of Vincent Belmonte. There's a lack of accountability with our police officers within our police force. We as tax, tax-paying citizens, if, if the service, if, if this entity isn't providing a, a beneficial service to us, we have the right to design something completely different. And I also think that we can't expect for the police to police themselves. I'm sorry, I got a call there. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, we can't, we can't continue to expect for the police to police themselves. So we need a citizens, a true independent citizens review board with real subpoena power. We need to be able to also have an input on what the punishments are when officers are found guilty of using excessive force.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Tolbert. The question is, what can you do as a councilperson to increase the number of people in the ward who have taken the COVID vaccine?
What can I do to increase the number of people? This is one of those questions where I truly feel like if you're for it or you're not for it, it's your own personal decision to make. There hasn't been any long-term study that has proven this COVID vaccine to be effective. I know people that have gotten the vaccine that have still contracted COVID. I know people that have gotten the vaccine that have still passed away due to COVID. So until there is a legitimate long-term study, I'm, me personally, I'm not advising people to take the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
So we've been taking vaccines since, since I was a child. Vaccines like the MMR, MERS-Uzamabella, polio vaccines. These vaccines have been, been vetted and they've been known to work. And now we have a vaccine that is going to stop people from dying. So, you know, Cleveland Pub, Pub Library has been instrumental in getting out the word about vaccines. They've been helping get those vaccines out. And I think that that's an entity along with, you know, community partners at our rec centers, at our CDCs to say, hey, you know, we, we, we've got to get back to normal. If you want to get back to normalcy and going out and doing the things that we'd like to do, we've gonna have to step up and be responsible and take the vaccine. Although, yeah, it's your choice, but you know.
Thank you. Ms. Gray?
Did you repeat the question?
Sure. What can you do as a councilperson to help increase the number of people in the ward who would, who have taken the COVID vaccine?
Who has taken it or who hasn't taken it?
I think the, I think the wording was supposed to be basically encourage people to take it. What can you do to kind of impact that?
That sounds better. Well, we have to basically, I think, to keep educating residents to understand what this vaccine means for, for themselves, for their family members, for their friends, when they get out into the public, how to interact with everyone, and it means for them to stay safe. We know this is a hard pill for them to swallow at this time, but something is going on in the environment to get people sick from whatever out here. So we just have to keep having conversations with the doctors, with the scientists, you know, with your family members, just to have an understanding that you mean everything to me. Police just understand to take a leap of faith and understand that this
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you.
So the next question, we'll start with Ms. Gray. Your question is, if you had a choice, what council committee would you join to best advance your priorities?
That's a good question because I, I deal with so many different agencies. I would like to join I would like to join finance. The Finance Council because the Finance Council has a handle on everything that's involved in the community. We talking about housing, we talking about transportation, you know, we're talking about, we talking about everything that's involved, dealing with, everything goes through finance. So I would like to be on that committee because by me working in the community, dealing with so many things hands-on, I'm learning how to understand, to talk to the community, to have them, to have them understand how the money will be spent in our community. So this first. So that's the one that I would prefer to be on first other than transportation and housing, you know, what I deal with too. But finance is
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. So briefly, I would like to just be gone. I'm not anti-vax. I saw that in the comments. I'm pro-choice. I'm pro people having the ability to determine whether they want the vaccine or not. And absolutely, I, the committee I thought that I deem as most important would probably be the Finance Committee along with Public Safety, the Safety Committee, along with Sustainability and the Sustainability and Development Committee. When we look at Ward Four, there's a need for sustainable development in Ward Four. It is one of the most neglected wards on the southeast side of Cleveland. There has not been any new housing infrastructure built in this area in a very long time. And like I said before, the Finance Committee, I think is probably the most important committee, but for what Ward Four needs specifically, housing, sustainability, and safety. Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
So the committee that I would want to be on is, was, is, is city planning. I think city planning is essential to, to, of course, the entire city. And we, we've seen development happen throughout a city like, throughout the city like in Tremont and in Ward One and building of new houses. And I think if, if I was a part of that city planning, that we could get development here in Ward Four. Of course, we will have to make sure that it's equitable in nature, that development that happens in Ward Four doesn't displace, that we're not gentrifying, gentrifying our war and that we're getting our neighbors and our community involved in everything. We've got to come together in Ward Four to make this war one that I believe would be viable throughout the city of Cleveland.
Thank you. For our next set of questions, we'll start with Mr. Walker. So your question is, this community has suffered and lost a level of trust with the investigation and conviction of Ken Johnson. How do you anticipate building trust in the community if elected?
So thank you for that question. You know, one of the reasons why I'm running is because, you know, I, I think we, we've got to bring honesty, integrity, and government transparency back into, to Ward Four. And so the one thing I, I believe that we need to do to, to gain honesty is first, we've got to, Anita Gardner says this and she reminds me of this all the time. We've got to put neighbor back in neighborhood. You know, for so long that we've, we've, we've called our, our neighborhood the hood, where anybody could come and do anything that they feel that they can do in our neighborhood. We've got to get back to putting neighbor back into neighborhood. And that means that having a ward meeting every month for our citizens and our community to come back and discuss and to tell them what's going on in, in this ward. And I think that's going to put trust, honesty, and integrity back into our
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, ma'am. Thank you. I'm going to piggyback off of what Mr. Walker said. Community meetings, really being able to be accessible, allowing people to really be able to touch and build a relationship with the councilman. Currently, every Monday since August, I've been hosting community meetings as a majority from four to six. I have not missed a Monday. Also, I'm gonna piggyback off something I heard Mario Snowden say at the previous primary forum. IBR systems, we should be able to send out a text message to every resident within the ward. And for those that may not be text savvy, it's a phone call, automated voice messaging system, like what the school systems use. Also, social media, creating a Ward Four community page where we can have dialogue. Also, there's one more thing I forget. Yeah, community meetings. Oh, a coalition. We need a community coalition. Everyone needs to have a seat at the table from our, from our elders to our young folk that, that are growing up in Ward Four. Everyone should have a seat at the table. If you're a business owner
Thank you, Mr. Tolbert.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Gray, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes.
This community has suffered and lost a level of trust with the investigation and conviction of Ken Johnson. How do you anticipate building trust in the community if elected?
If elected, since I am a precinct commit, elected precinct committee person that been elected by my residents in my precinct, which is part of Ward Four and my precinct is four F. I have five streets per se, but moving forward is I would, I would have ward club meetings, of course, that's mandatory. But I would have meetings per precinct in each neighborhood. So, so the precinct members can also be available and transparent to the residents in that precinct. So where when we come together in our ward meetings, we will already have agenda of what has been discussed in per precinct. We need active precinct committee members to assist the council to, to have transparent and to be accountable for the actions that's going on in our wards. And, and the main thing that we will talk about, we will talk about the issues and concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you.
Our next set of questions, we'll start with Mr. Tolbert. And your question is, voting turnout for Ward Four for the primary election was extremely low at about ten percent. What will you do to increase voting in Ward Four?
Thank you. And really briefly, I want to double back. One thing that I left off was participatory budgeting. We're talking about transparency and building relationships, trust in the community. Participatory budgeting with the Ward Four budget is something that is councilman, is something that's on the table for me. And increasing voter turnout, civic engagement, one, educating people on what a councilman is, what's on the ballot, going into communities that are not traditionally pursued because they don't have an active voting presence. So what I've been doing is I've been going to those areas that most candidates don't often go to. I'm speaking with young people. I'm informing those that have recently been incarcerated that are not free. You have the right to vote. So educating them on what's on the ballot. The fact that, what, what, what are we able to hold these elected officials accountable for? So increasing the education, like, and, and just really focusing on the commonalities because we're all being plagued by the same issue. There's one Ward Four.
Thank you. Ms. Gray?
Did you repeat the question?
Sure. Voting turnout for Ward Four was extremely low for the primary election at about ten percent. What will you do to increase voting in Ward Four?
Well, as my opening statement is, I have said civic participation is vital to our democracy as well as to every community in every ward around Calhoun County. We need to, as I said, we need to get our residents involved into understanding the voting practices. And that's going back to, and that's going back to working with our precinct committee members. There's twenty-one precincts in Ward Four. Each precinct committee member has an obligation to get the vote turned out in their precinct and also listen to the issues, concerns of the residents. We need our precinct members to step up, to knock on doors, to talk to our residents about civic participation. That is mandatory for the precinct members to be voted in. So, so that's first and foremost. And also, we need to talk about the public comment. I agree with Mr. Tolbert. Participatory budget, we need to be
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
You know how that's done. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, so I, I, I've kind of already started this, you know. When I was talking about the event that we had last year, September twenty-sixth, we, we, we were instrumental in getting people coming out to register and vote, which Ms. Gray was a part of. She, she was there and she helped us, helped us get people registered to vote. Look, you know, we, we've got to bring together community partners like the Legal Women Voters, like Concerned Citizens on one hundred and thirty-seven, like the Cleveland Public Library to promote and to get people out to, to register and vote. One thing that I, I, I've heard on my campaign, especially from young people, is they, they're not voting because they can't identify with things that affect them. And the things that I bring up, like fifteen-hour minimum wage, healthcare for, affordable healthcare, these are things that matter. We've got to, the next councilperson has got to be a sharp in making sure that the things that matter to people
Thank you, Mr. Walker. All right. For our next question, we're gonna start with Mr. Walker. And the question is, what ideas do you have to, I'm sorry. What ideas do you have to address the declining population in the ward? So we'll start with Mr. Walker.
So the, the declining population has to do more so, for one, getting people involved, getting people involved in their neighborhood. Right now, the decline, the population that we have is people are not coming in and buying hot homes here in our ward. Excuse me. And so we've got to make sure that the next councilperson is, is adamant about building affordable homes and making sure that people are invested in, in home ownership. We've got to highlight programs that get them into homes. We've got a whole bunch of homes that need to be refurbished, that need to be fixed up. Let's get into those programs and fixing up homes and making sure that people are invested in those things. And so if we get homeownership back in our ward, we get people invested in that, it's going to our population.
Ms. Gray?
Did you pick the question?
Sure. What ideas do you have to address the declining population in the ward?
What ideas do I have to address the declining population in the ward? Is to understand what the war is, to understand what we have to offer to people to come back into our community. So that's something first that we need to understand how to address, what's going to bring people into our city. We have, we have people are, we have good senior citizens already in our community. We need to open up the agenda. We need to open the agenda to, to connect with what we have to offer. Do we have great jobs to offer? Do we have great home, homes to offer? You know, do we have great communities to offer? You know, are we gonna sit down to talk about, you know?
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. So what's gonna bring people back into Ward Four? Number one, an easier, simpler pathway to home ownership. Right now, Ward Four is like one of the most transient wars in all of Cleveland. A lot of renters, people are here for a year, gone the next. Great paying jobs within walking distance. There are none in Ward Four. We look at what's going on down near University Circle with Cleveland Clinic, with University Hospital and all the other successful businesses that's around it. They are, they are lacking, residents are moving, are leaving from those areas. And safety, safety is a big thing. So how, how is it that we want people to, to, to want to move back into this ward, to stay here in this ward if safety is like the number one concern? And we have businesses leaving. I think about Mr. Alex who's on Buckeye who lost his son recently, like something has to be done about safety within Ward Four. We want people to stay here. If we want this to be a, a appealing neighborhood that people want to move into.
Thank you. For our next question, we're gonna start with Ms. Gray. So the question submitted was, Ken Johnson was the fifth Cleveland City Council member in the last twenty years to be convicted of crimes in office. What will you do as our council representative to change the culture of corruption on city council?
That's a loaded question. That's a very, very loaded question. So how would I change the corruption on city council?
Change the culture of it.
Oh, change the to be transparent. I'll be transparent to the residents in my community to have them, to make sure they have an understanding about the finance that comes into our, comes to our Ward Four. We talking about public comment. We talking about the participatory how money comes into our community and they will understand how that money is to be spent. So you have to be transparent to the residents to understand that they are part of everything so they won't have to be uncomfortable about corruption. They can also go into, they can open up the checkbook of the website.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Understand that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
You guys hear me? I'm having some issues with my internet, so I want to make sure.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So to change the, the culture of corruption is gonna come with the next councilperson. The next councilperson is going to have to make sure that in going into that seat, you know, that all eyes, whoever the next councilperson of Ward Four is, all eyes are gonna be on us. And we have to make sure that we're doing exactly what we need to do to make, to, to, to gain the trust of, of, of our constituents. And so what that means is, is that, you know, I'm coming with, with, again, honesty, integrity, and transparency. And I want that to translate into, into, into the body of, of city council. And, you know, so it's gonna be incumbent on whoever is, is, is the next councilperson to make sure that they're doing their best to make sure to gain the trust of the people.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, ma'am. So the culture of politics, I think that corruption and politicians are like synonymous. One thing that I've really gotten a more thorough understanding of while canvassing the community is that people in the community not trust politicians. One thing I've heard often while I'm out canvassing is, you guys are all the same. So what we need to do is just change the way politics and politicians operate in our communities. Things like participatory budgeting, we, we build that trust. Things like a, a, a community coalition to where we're able to really have a consistent form of communication where people know what's going on constantly. And I think that those things are necessary to really move us forward. And we need someone going down to City Hall that's not going down there to make friends because going down there to make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next question, we'll start with Mr. Tolbert. It's a two-part question. It says, how do you plan to communicate? How do you plan to communicate and build connections with the neighbors and groups in the community? And will you have an office in the ward?
Absolutely. My answer to that is, to the second part of the question, is an office in the ward, absolutely, with an open door policy. And how do we build connections with residents in the communities? For me personally, is staying grounded in the work that I'm already doing. The work that I'm already doing in Ward Four with business owners, the work that I'm already doing in Ward Four with residents, making sure that our streets are safe. Staying grounded in the work is, is what's gonna allow for those relationships to build, consistence. If I'm showing up to a place and I'm inconsistent, that, that allows for the opportunity for people to really be able to really get a feel for who I am as a councilman, who I am as a leader, and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Right. So right now, I, 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 I'm working full-time. I work full-time for the Cleveland Public Library. So I don't have means to have an office yet. If there's some way that I, I can find an office and have it in the ward, most definitely. I, I want an office in the ward. How do we, how are we gonna connect with people in the community? And think that's gonna take all of us, all of us to come together, to not be divided and to make sure that we're all working in tandem to make sure that this ward moves forward. Again, in running, I found out that Concerned Citizens Community Center is a, is a, is a, is a fantastic place that does things that is a, is a, is a, uh, fantastic place, um, that does things that I didn't even know about. Um, uh, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Anita Gardner, she has a hoop house there. She provides things for people who are, are looking for shelter. And so I wanna make sure that we're highlighting that to bring people-
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Gray, do you need me to repeat the question?
Could you?
Sure. How do you plan, plan to communicate and build connections with neighbors and groups in the community? And then will you have an office if elected in the ward?
Well, the second part, uh, yes, there, there will be a office in the ward. Uh, so, uh, the people can have a place to come. And basically, that's where your War Club meetings will be once a month, as well as, uh, a community board that I have planned to set up for the residents. They will have a place to come to, to discuss the issues and concerns in their neighborhoods. And, and I'm already and have been connecting with the residents in the community, uh, since I've been in, uh, War Four since nineteen eighty-nine. I've been boots on the ground, knocking on doors since then. I have a broad connection over the entire War Four, Willen Hills, Cleveland Buckeye, Cleveland Shaker, Mount Pleasant. I have connected with many organizations and residents all over. I have already had that connection and that understanding because I listen to what they need and how I can help them with their needs. So that connection is already, uh, been stable and I'm gonna move forward with more of the connection throughout War Four.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. So for our next question, we'll start with Ms. Gray. Your question is, what mayoral candidate do you support and why?
Boy, that's another loaded question. That's another loaded question. Um, I s- I guess said, um, earlier, that, um, oh, boy. I have to just, I have to just, whoever decide to, whoever decide to get that position, I will have to work with that mayor, the tenets of War Four, because we need a lot to have done in War Four. So right now, whoever in that position, per se, that's who I have to work with to provide War Four, uh, needs at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, I'll be completely honest, the candidate that I was working with during the primary did not make it to, uh, the general election. Uh, but as of right now, I'm choosing to support Justin Bibb. That's who will be getting, that's who will be getting my vote on November second. I think that we need someone that is not a part of the current establishment, that has minimal to little experience, uh, in politics. We don't need a politician right now. Right now, CDA Cleveland needs fresh, new innovative leadership. That's who I'm choosing to side with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Oh, just this morning, um, Cleveland.com and a Plain Dealer endorsed me. And so I'm thankful to them for that endorsement. And in it, they asked us, um, who are we supporting for, uh, mayor? And my answer is Justin Bibb. You know, one of the things that we have to do, you know, as, as, as we grow and get older, is allow our young people to come and take over and to, to lead this city. They're coming into their own. They have some new, fresh ideas. And I think Justin Bibb is the person, the right person, right now to, 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 to do the job.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Walker. What ideas do you have to address the needs of the homeless population within the ward?
Oh, so thi- this is, um, a, a, a very, um, a question that's dear to me. Um, as a Christian man, one of the mandates that we have is that we, we have to, um, take care of, 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 of our poor and our destitute. And one of the things I think, um, with, with, um, the American Rescue Plan Act money, the five hundred and eleven million dollars that, um, we have coming into a city. I think part of that is that we're gonna have to, to dedicate some of those funds to taking care of our homeless and taking care of those less fortunate to us. We can't continue to go and say, you know, we're gonna be this great shining city on the hill when we're walking over people who are laying down in the street-
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Every day. We've gotta do something about it.
Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. So, I'm needed. Okay, there we go. Um, so I've been an advocate for the homeless. Uh, I've been down to the Cuyahoga County Building advocating for, uh, housing. Uh, currently, right now, we, well, back in August, we had, uh, men out at the Ramada Inn that were, um, fighting the same issue. And also know that, uh, this is put together by the Shaker Square Alliance. So I think this is important to speak on too. The fact that, uh, there's a lady by the name of Ms. Joyce and her daughter Ms. T., who have been living on Shaker Square for a very long time. It's just really building that sense of community. If we see someone in need, the community should rally around those people. That's, the mindset has to change in our neighborhoods. We can build whatever legislation, we can pass whatever policy, but when we see people that are in need, something has to be done. And, and that falls on us as the community to really rally, rally around those of us that, that need the help. We're all one paycheck away, um, from being in that situation. So I think that the sooner we realize that, we can, we can look at each other through a different lens.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, repeat the question.
Sure. What ideas do you have to address the needs of the homeless population within the ward?
Well, the idea that I, uh, big, well, that's the first question that anybody brought to my attention. But what I have already done with, um, some of the homeless that I've met, uh, while I'm out campaigning, and prior to that, I met a few people that, uh, live in, uh, water, in a squatter situation, in squatter homes. And when they, uh, let me know, um, their situation because they needed help as in clothing, or food, or any type of electrical, or phone help, what I did, I went to, uh, Anita Gardner, uh, our current councilwoman. I went to her center and we provided, she told me and helped, helped, uh, help a couple of the homeless women. She provided them the, uh, safe homes or the border homes or the, uh, halfway homes that she, uh, 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 sent them to. And she sent me to quite a few homes around the city of Cleveland-
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
They can be, they can live in. So that's what I have been doing.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Tolbert. What do you see as the major challenges facing Shaker Square?
I think that right now, Shaker Square is, is, it, it appears to be struggling to find its identity. Um, I, I love the new businesses that I see popping up, uh, like the Breakfast Club, Great Food. Um, and there's some of the businesses that have been there for a long time, like Captain Tony's. Uh, myself, my first job was on Shaker Square at East Coast Custer. I worked there for, you know, for three years. Um, and, and growing up in the community, I used, I grew up on Shaker Boulevard. There used to be so many things that you can go on Shaker Square and do just as a kid, uh, with no money in your pocket. Going to Joseph Beth Bookstore and listening to sample, uh, album records, um, looking at pictures, just being able to grab a book. I think that there needs to be intentional investment in Shaker Square. I think that we also need to focus on more small, uh, small business owners in Shaker Square. I would love to see, uh, people from the community that have great things going on with their businesses, bringing those to, to, right to Shaker Square. So community ownership of Shaker Square is what I'm pushing for.
Thank you. Ms. Gray?
Yes, could you repeat the question?
Sure. What do you see as the major challenges facing Shaker Square?
The major challenges that faces Shake, Shaker Square? Are you talking about, the major challenge that they're facing right now is the, uh, foreclosure that's going on Shaker Square right now. That's the major challenge. Uh, so, um, from my understanding, that I did have a conversation with, um, uh, to, uh, Ms. Manise and, uh, Joy, Joy Johnson yesterday. Uh, they presented, uh, what they have planned to do with Shaker Square. You know, they want to have the, uh, city to buy Shaker Square as a mortgage and for Neighborhood Progress to own it and for BBC to take ten percent of it. And they looking forward to see which council they get in position that agree with them. I, I agree with the private and public, uh, partnership, uh, for Shaker Square. But at the end of the day, the judge gonna make a decision.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Right, so I as well had a conversation with, um, um, Tanya, uh, Manise and, and, uh, Cleveland Neighborhood Progress. And so we, we, we do understand that, uh, Shaker Square right now is a receivership. And, uh, from the, the meetings that I've had with Shaker, uh, Square Alliance, as well as, um, Burton Bell Car, is that we want to make sure that, um, it falls in the hands of someone who's going to manage it and maintain it and, um, make sure that it, 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 it's, it's well-kept. You know, we don't want someone coming outside of the ward who's not going to be invested in it. And so, again, right, so, uh, Ms. Gray is right. It, it seems as though, uh, there's legislation that's working on its way through city council to use some of the American Res- Rescue Plan Act money, um, to acquire Shaker Square and, and Cleveland Neighborhood Progress, take ownership of it. And, uh, Cleveland would be a manager partner in it.
Thank you. So this will be our last question where all the candidates will answer and then we'll have a round of questions that are individual to specific candidates. We'll start with Mr. Walker. Your question is, how would, if elected, how would you work with fire, police, EMS, and the residents to improve safety?
Um, so, uh, one of my plans is, if, if, if I'm elected, is to go to, we've got, what? Two, uh, firehouses in, in War Four, I believe. And so, uh, if I'm elected, I wanna go, um, and, and sit with them and talk about what their needs are. You know, I was in a, a forum, um, in a informational forum some time ago. And we know that, um, the high risks of cancer for our fire departments, um, are, are prevalent. So I wanna make sure that I'm addressing that. Um, we, we, we need them. We, we also need our police. We understand that right now, the resources in Cleveland for Cleveland Police are abysmal. And so we have to, um, see what kind of funding they need to, to get back up to par. So I'm, I'm, and, and EMS, EMS is, is vital. It's vital to the safety, um, when people are in dire need-
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
They need EMS, so, yes.
Ms. Gray, do you need me to repeat the question?
So please.
How would you, if elected, work with fire, police, EMS, and residents to improve safety?
Well, the first thing that I have been addressed by the fire department, I had a meeting with them. As we know, if no one knows in the community, that they get ready to move the East Hundred Sixteen Fire Station and merge it with the East Seventy-Ninth on Kisma, and they get ready to build their new, uh, home on Ninety-third and Ninety-third Street next to, uh, a KFC. So, so we're gonna be eliminated with our fire station, Hundred Sixteenth, because of that. And they gonna be, um, they gonna have a, a broader access to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, deal with a lot of more calls because they merging two of the fire stations. Right now, we need to sit at the table with, uh, with, uh, the fire captain, uh, per se, to find out how we can engage with them making decisions once again without including the residents. They want the council to assist with them. Whoever comes council, they want the council to be a part of making, uh, 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 prudent decisions. So-
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Tolbert?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, working with public safety, improving public safety, one, creating a pipeline. Uh, there's been talks of turning old South High School into, uh, like, sort of a pipeline system. Uh, high school kids, uh, I believe it's eleventh and twelfth grade, to have a, a, a pipeline directly into public safety, whether that's police or EMS. Uh, and then myself also as a frontline worker, I've worked, I've been working up until this, um, August, uh, in the ER at one of the largest hospitals, uh, right here in the northeast side, uh, northern side of Ohio. So I've seen the trauma firsthand. I, I, I see it every day. So, um, knowing that there needs to be more resources, especially when COVID happened, you know, we lack the resources to even do our job adequately. And, um, I think community policing initiative. I think if we're gonna talk about policing, we need to start having conversations about redesigning public safety. We truly want social communities. And the community, the, the communication barrier, I think about the Timur Rice situation. Had police had access to the direct, uh, phone call, they would have known that that was a twelve-year-old boy before Robin-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fanea, I, I, I'm wondering if, I'm, I'm sorry, but there's something in the chat that I think needs to be addressed. Um, and it's concerning me.
All right, so we're finished with the questions that are gonna specific, go to all, everyone. We're gonna go with the individual questions that were already pre-submitted.
Okay, can I address this question that's in the chat?
You can, you can address it when it's your time to answer a question if you choose to. So we'll start with Mr. Tolbert. Uh, this question was submitted in advance. And it is, why, what do you say to voters who wonder why you did not qualify to be on the primary ballot?
Good question. So, to me, running as a write-in was more strategy, uh, pulling petitions. There were eighteen, uh, candidates, if I'm not mistaken, at the time. So to me, it seemed like the best decision for myself. Um, betting on myself, really running a true grassroots, uh, campaign with very limited, um, very limited donations, it made it easier for myself. Uh, it created easier pathway for myself to just focus on the general election. Like, I, I truly have a true grassroots campaign. I'm not endorsed by, by any entities. I'm not entertaining, I haven't entertained any endorsements. I didn't entertain Plain Dealer. I, these, these entities have never really supported or highlighted our communities in a positive light. And, and furthermore, I think that people should be able to truly choose who they want their next leader to be. Oftentimes, people just vote down the ballot. People vote on name recognition. People vote on, vote for who they're told to vote. And I wanna be truly chosen by the people.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, so I'm gonna try to, this was a long one submitted. Um, so I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit, just in the essence of time. The question is in regards to a recent Deborah Gray Mailer that was sent out. Um, it says, Ms. Gray's opponent, on, on the, the mailer mentioned your opponent being financed by, quote, "minority money elite, money to lead in the shadows through third-party groups," end quote. So this person is asking for you to clarify what that means and what groups you were referring to.
I don't know, I don't know what you're talking about, about that letter. Um, I, I can't answer to that letter, uh, that, that letter that was sent out. I apologize. I don't know.
That's okay. Um, Mr. Walker, your question was, how can voters have confidence that you will fight for resources for War Four constituents?
Oh, I, 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 I need to defer and answer and, and address this, this, uh, statement in the chat from somebody named Greg. In it, he says that, um, I, and I got kicked out of school in sixth grade, that, um, I'm, haven't been working in the ward and that I probably don't have a high school diploma. So let me just address this. Um, when I was in sixth grade at Robert Fulton, I had, because we were moving around until we, we, we came here, I had some issues, um, where I stopped going. I stopped going to school and, and again, nobody came looking for me. And that's what I said at that forum then, that I'm sure Greg was that. Um, until then, my mother found out and pulled me out of, out of, out of, out of that school and placed me in Lutheran school where I could be, um, monitored closely. And I graduated from, uh, Lutheran High School East in nineteen eighty-eight. From there, I went to, um, University-
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Where I served, where I completed three years of-
Mr. Walker? Thank you.
So to, to say, to, to, to say that I'm running and people are pulling my strings, Greg, you're totally off-
Mr. Walker?
Load the bell and it's, it's unfortunate that, that you would say such a-
Thank you. So now it's come to the time where we're gonna go to, into closing statements. You'll have two minutes to, um, provide your closing statement to all the audience members. Um, please, oh, do not unmute your mic unless it is your time to speak. We're gonna start with Mr. Tolbert.
Thank you. Thank you guys for organizing this event. Thank you for the residents that took time out of your day to log on and, and really get a, a better feel for us as the candidates. Shout out to my colleagues for taking that leap of faith and choosing to run for political office. This is not an easy process. So it's so easy for people to sit in the comments and, and, and criticize us and say all these things. But I don't think that people truly understand the commitment that you have to make to yourself, to your family, the sacrifices that we have to make to step into this process. So I, I'm grateful for, for everybody this year that I've seen step up and, and become leaders. And for myself, I just want to say that it, it's time that we change the way that politics look and operate in our communities. We need real leaders with proven, have proven, they've been committed to the people that are truly, have a heart for public service, that are focused on uplifting all these oppressive barriers that have been holding people back. No mother should have to work two jobs to take care of her family. No mother should have to spend 13 hours a day away from her children. Things like this have to change in our community. And also, to the, to the younger generation that's watching me step into this process, I want to tell them that life is not just happening around us. Life is responding to us. So take ownership in that and knowing that anything is possible if you believe. And I mean truly believe in, in your mission, truly believe in yourself and be willing to, to give all you got to it. And I want to represent that right now. Being 30 years old, being from the community, facing all the trials, tribulations, and all the sacrifice I had to make to get to this point to my beautiful wife, my son, thank you all. Please follow me on social media or just go, go Google me.
Thank you, Mr. Talbert.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate you.
Ms. Gray, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you, everyone who's been part of this forum. Once again, we appreciate everyone who, who sent their questions in and hope all the questions were answered enough for you to understand what we all are committed to in the one or two-minute answer form of the questions. But I want to thank, I want to let you know, this election is about the future of Ward Four. We, we will fight for our southeastside neighborhoods. Or will we back down? Which one? I believe this fight is vital. Our democracy is vital to save Ward Four moving forward. Because as you know, in another three and a half years, they looking to, they looking to take Ward Four out because they're going to reduce 17 wars to 15 wars. So we have to look at that. We have to stand up. We have the power in our voices to stand together and fight for Ward Four. This is vital. I, I am the only candidate with proven results, and I'm the only elected Democratic in this race. That's why Dems, women caucus, Stonewall, Young Doms, Young Black Women, PAC, and finally, UAW, W has supported me in my platform. What stands for the issue and concerns of the residents. That's how I built my platform, not from politicians. I am not the person to be bought. This is for the people of Ward Four. It's vital to put the most proven, elected, experienced person in this ward. I have stood up for the people. I'm standing for all the people. And we have to take our ward back. And I am the elected Democratic person to do that. Deborah Gray for Council for Ward Four.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, your closing statement. Mr. Walker? Is he on?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had to unmute.
That's okay, go ahead.
You know, I, I, I got involved because unlike some who are saying in the chat that I've never done anything into the ward, it's not my personality to go out and do for people and help people and then to promote it so that everybody knows about what I'm doing and who I'm helping. My, our job is to, to, to come together and to fight for the soul of Ward Four, to come together and because we've been so divided for so long. Just imagine, just imagine, if we came together and we learned from each other and we learned the different, the different things about, about our different areas. And we use what we learned to go down to City Hall to make it better. That's why I'm running for, for Ward Four. That's why I'm running for city council. I could have easily sat back and criticized and talked about what wasn't happening and what needs to be done. Yet I'm getting in the fight. I'm getting in the fight to make a change for, for people and for, for those less fortunate and for voiceless of this, of this ward. And SEIU and The Plain Dealer and Cleveland, Better Cleveland for All and Cuyahoga Community, Cuyahoga County Progressive Caucus and Reclaim Ward for All thing that I have the ability to do. So when you, when folks in the chat sit back and say that I'm a puppet, I'm no puppet. Never have been a puppet, and I won't be a puppet in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to thank all of the candidates for their participation. But I most importantly want to acknowledge the residents that took the time to log on. And I hope through this question and answer session, you've really been able to see what the candidates would have in mind for their vision if they were elected. Because ultimately, one of them will be your next city council. So thank you to everyone who took the time to join us. I'm going to pass it back over to Chip, so for closing remarks.
Chip, you're muted.
Let me just thank everybody who helped put this together. Meg, Charlene, and Mary Ann. This is a lot of work. I was kind of amazed when we started on this project. There weren't like 20 groups that were formed together to have a forum on this, on this important election. I've been working over in Shaker Square for the last 10 or 12 years. And this is going to be a change election, folks. I mean, no matter who wins, it's going to be a change election. So get out and get involved and vote. It's a change election for Shaker Square, Mount Pleasant, for North and South Morland, for Larchmere, for Buckeye. It's a change election. So people got to get involved and vote. And Mary Ann, I'll turn it over to you. I just, again, Charlene, great job. Appreciate your efforts. It's always tough to be the moderator, going back and forth. And Meg, thanks for keeping the signs up in the air. So, Mary Ann, last comments.
Yeah, thank you. I also want to thank Chanel for doing such a great job moderating. And thank you, Chip and, and Meg. Thank you for everyone who attended. The questions were great, very thoughtful, well-considered questions. Thank you for joining us today. And thank you most of all to the candidates, Mrs. Gray, Mr. Walker, Mr. Talbert. Thank you for your commitment to the community. This is really a challenging time to run for office in this ward. Thank you so much. It's really a critical time. Thank you for the time and effort you put in to running for office and putting yourself out there. It's a big commitment. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, that's it, folks. Again, a round of thanks for everybody. Good luck to the candidates. Hopefully, when it's all over, you get some rest. When I ran, I think I slept for a week after it was over with. So.